Okay, so we're gonna call to order the study session for the Lathrop Village City Council. Um, and just to repeat this in accordance with the PA two five four of twenty twenty, the members should identify their physical locations by saying the county, city, town, shepherd village, and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. So can we please go ahead and just take roll call of where everybody's calling you from?
Roll call, would you like for me to say roll call, Madam Mayor, or you guys are?
You can say it however they can jump in and just say it, you don't have to take roll call.
Okay, okay, just jump in.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I'll start it then. I'm calling from um Lathrop Village, City of Lathrop Village, Oakland County, State of Michigan.
Bruce Canner, Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Ian Ferguson, Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
John Medley, Old Fields, Suffolk County, New York.
All right.
So I made the decision on Friday, I could fly to Lathropville or to Detroit, or I could fly to New York and with the power outage, no way. I came where there was air conditioning.
I hear you.
Thank you DT.
So I do have a favor to ask of everyone based off of our little town hall yesterday and just to true transparency. And from where I went to the mayor's conference on last week, which was very interesting. I would ask all council members to turn on their cameras, please. So you are focused and and appear to be a part of the meeting, please. Or you can ignore me.
Well, I promise, I I have a mouthful of food, but I will do that.
Um, okay, dokie, and I'm saying all this because if we're not gonna be meeting in public, then at least we need to show that we're all participating and we are focused on what we're doing and we are not trying to multitask. Even though some of us are good at being on camera and multitasking, but that I'm just giving the reason behind it. So thank you, guys. Uh, so the first thing up, uh, we're gonna have is discussion items for the city administrator report, which looks like that's pretty, that's gonna take up what an hour of everything?
Maybe two. So, um, in case you haven't heard, there's been a power outage in Lathrop Village. And um, it impacted most of the residents as well as City Hall and our operations. So we were closed for Thursday and Friday to the public and no power of the weekend. We did get restoration of power late yesterday to part of the building. And the internet phones and computer systems came up on this afternoon for most of us, not all of us. So um, we still may have some delays in responding to inquiries, but we're trying to get up and running fully as soon as we can. Um, there, in regards to that, we were able to get the agenda packet completed and posted. However, there is a couple of missing items because they were on the server and we just couldn't retrieve them. So the financial reports are not in the packet as well as the minutes from, I think, the July twenty sixth meeting, they'll be on the September council agenda.
I'll um, I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion during the meeting to modify the agenda to take that off the agenda.
That's exactly what I was about to ask. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Ian, for coming on camera.
And in regards to the backup generator, um, the news that we received to, well, first of all, the backup generator ran for several days and they were helping with the police operations. But then it failed over the weekend and um, so we had someone come out and look at it and it seems that it's a significant issue with it. So we're gonna have to get repairs. In the meantime, we had already been trying to get quotes for a all building generator. And those costs are pretty significant, but at least we're exploring those options already. And the audit is underway and Pam's been working closely with the auditors when she had email access. So that may be a little bit behind in getting the information to them. I'm gonna skip a couple of them that aren't as pressing. The um, the home serve, the company that we have the agreement with through National League of Cities, NLC, for the water and sewer warranty protection coverage that's available to the residents, they'll be sending out their fall campaign. So I was just alerting you to that.
Um, I highly recommend that because I only had to do one phone call and I paid seventy seven dollars for the year. And I avoided paying one hundred dollars for one service call. And if you hear a gurgle, you call them, you say you hear a gurgle and they are out and they are snake in the line. It was, it was excellent, just let you know.
Okay, um.
Cheryl, um, one, one question on that. Because that came up in our meeting last night and was actually just kind of confusing. We couldn't figure out what the, what he was asking. And it finally came out that it was about the, you know, this optional. I, I, I just wanna make sure that in their literature again this year that they are going to be very clear that this is an optional service and not something that the city is, is telling them to do because there was, there was, there's always been confusion about that and that.
I, I think the language is standard, so I'm not certain what, what language would clarify that as an optional service.
Yeah, they, they had, they had it in, in the last letter that went out.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure that it's, it's in there again because again, I think it needs to be emphasized because people are still confused.
Okay. All right, and then on the clerk elections, the general election is going to be Tuesday, November second. And um, as we did in the last two elections, I would like to close City Hall for that day. Um, it helps with the flow of traffic as well as minimizing the number of people in the building because we still have a pandemic situation present. So if there weren't any objections to that, we will go ahead with that process again. And then relative to the charter amendment, we did receive the language from the governor and the Attorney General's Office that they have authorized and approved the language. So that will be on the November ballot and that's basically moving the presentation of the budget and the adoption of the budget one month back. So from April and May to May and June adoption. And on the cannabis marijuana process, as you know, those ordinances were adopted for the city code as well as for the zoning. They went into effect August eighth and ninth. There, we're not moving forward with those in terms of the actual application of them because we still have to do the application process and scoring matrix resolutions. So the tentative plan for moving that forward, because staff is already working with our attorney and the planner in regards to drafting some language for you to consider at your September study sessions. And then um, acting on that resolution at your October meeting, the thirty day period to accept applications could be as soon as November. And what the awarding of a license, if you decide to move forward, could happen in December. And they could start that process with the beginning of the new year, assuming there aren't any complications or other issues that arise.
So on something like this, when it comes to the considerate consideration of the resolution, um, just for whomever may be pulling this packet, that is, and I'm clarifying also, that is when um, we decide whether or not we're going to vote yes or no on um, having cannabis period in later, right?
It's the, the scoring and the start date for applications.
So that's why. So that's where I think even maybe I'm confused because I did not vote yes to have marijuana in Lathrop, right? So where is it that we're doing, when are we doing that? Because it looks like we, we agreed to the application process, the scoring matrix, we voted on it in October and then that's just it?
So that's, that's, I, I think, I think Scott just came off mute. So yeah, so let, I'll take it.
Yeah, sorry, I, I'm uh, I'm on three G, so my video is not working and I apologize if my audio cuts in and out. But the, what happened last month was, was adopting the framework and the ordinances by which uh, applications will, uh, the standards that applications will have to, what they will have to contain. Resolutions that will be presented to council next month for consideration will be the scoring matrix and the app and the actual application itself. Uh, City Council would then, or I'm sorry, the city would then open up a period of time by resolution when they would begin accepting those applications and scoring based on that scoring matrix. And then uh, it would, it would be, the top two candidates would be presented to council. And council would make a determination whether they were to issue that license or not. So there, there are still opportunity, there are still several opportunities for council to review this. And, and if they choose not to issue any licenses, then that's the choice of council. But the framework and all of the uh, you know, the, the meat of the ordinance is done. So just, it's just a matter of doing the scoring matrix and then, and then opening up that application period.
So um, and so that's where I, I guess maybe I, I'm just like with the residents that are very concerned about this. Because it doesn't, to me, and this is me just being Achilles, you know, being hitting Achilles heel as a pain in the heel. Um, is, it does not seem like there's actually a vote and that we kind of already have instituted saying yes to having marijuana. And I said seen before you all jump on me um, from the ordinance. And I understand the ordinance because again, being at this conference, um, with the smaller municipalities that were involved, what if they've all done the same thing? But the majority of them um, still opted out from it, even though they had the ordinance in place. Does that make sense? Is my computer working?
Is that, is that a question for council or, or Scott?
That was to Scott.
Oh, uh, Scott's on, oh, yeah, there you go. I think it's.
Yeah, so there, there is, there, there actually won't be a point in time where City Council has to determine whether or not they wish to allow cannabis businesses in the city. It'll be on a case by case basis. So if, if City Council never approves a resolution, opening up an application period, then there, by default, will be no cannabis businesses in the city because there is no opportunity for applicants to apply. Likewise, if there is a, an application period and applications are submitted, if council chooses not to or does not approve any of those licenses, then there will be no cannabis business, businesses in the city of Lathrop Village. There, there aren't any um, planned moratoriums or anything of that nature or opt out ordinances that, that are currently pending before council. So, so the only opportunity for council to, to say either yes or no to the cannabis businesses will come through those resolutions and through the eventual now, license applications should, should they authorize those resolutions.
And so at this point, even if we were saying that um, we have a lot of disgruntled um, residents upset about it. And we chose to, or this is me saying that we should wait. At least we're, for example, Madison Heights or Sterling Heights or whatever else, the other um, locations that were interviewed for this. Once they have one year on the books of having this in their town. And then for us to be able to, to look at after that, that's not an option amongst council.
Well, it, it is, it is still an option. I mean, council could choose to, to table the resolutions when they're ready next month. Uh, if they weren't ready to act on them and, and kind of wait it out and see what happens. But at this, like you said, at this point, the next steps would be those resolutions, authorizing the scoring matrix and then scheduling the application period.
So there is an opportunity for us to stop this and give it a pause.
Yes, there, there, there is that opportunity simply by not moving forward on the next steps.
So then I have a question for you, Ian and Saleem. For this, the cities that you all interviewed and got information on, how long have they been in business with cannabis?
Uh, since uh, I'll have to pull up my, my paperwork here. Hold on a second.
Yeah, I don't recall the dates offhand, Kelly.
Yeah, but the, I think at the time we started, it may have been at least two years, three years. One, one city was three and the other one I can't remember. So let me see if I could find it.
How could they have cannabis three years in, in a retail situation? It just got approved really in two thousand eighteen?
I think the ones that Ian's talking about are probably the medical marijuana.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm, I'm strictly talking about how long have the dispensaries, the dispensary, excuse me, um, been in operation in the cities that you've investigated? Has it been a year or more?
At this point, it has been over a year.
The medical part of it was over a year when we started.
Nope, just I didn't talk dispensaries.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have to go back and check.
Okay, you let me know because here's the thing, this is where I'm going with this is that I know that we've all discussed um, the reasons why you may be for it. Um, but I would just be curious, after having a solid year in operations as a recreational facility, what was the income to the city? What, you know, type of um, you know, any issues or things like that to, you know, just to be able to truly make a educated decision? And, and I think this is what we talked about before because it was so new that no one had any type of um, you know.
Well, the state hadn't issued out any, any checks, if that's what you're asking, when we started doing the research.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm basically asking to see all the benefits that has been brought before us and have been discussed amongst us. To see those benefits, how did it affect those cities like Madison Heights, Burn Dale, Sterling Heights? How has that affected them um, after being in business for a year or more? I'm just curious in that.
Uh, I am still looking for that document because I, I mean, I just feel like this is being sprung on me here. So now I have to look through my file.
That's why I started study session because we just, right now, it's not about, well, we're trying to make a decision. This, this is not something that you have to do now. I just want, I'm asking these questions because I wanna make sure that we all have done our due diligence of everything that, you know, people have brought to us and have said on our cause of what you're standing on is still true after being in business for a year or more in different cities. That's all.
Well, the first part of that is what revenue has each city um, received? Well, they did receive, I don't even know if you call it resident revenue, but there was an application fee for each city. And it depends on how many cannabis businesses they had there. So uh, whatever that, what was that?
I think it was twenty eight thousand dollars per cannabis.
Right, so that, that was, that was part of the revenue. Um, and I, let me just, I'm trying to go through my file here so I could find.
So and I, I think Kelly's, Kelly's question is really good. One of the things and, and Saleem and Ian will remember, when we were talking to the other towns, they initially had started with two and they were seeing um, the, the potential. And so they went back and added additional licenses after that. So I think there was something, the other thing that Bruce mentioned as far as the twenty eight thousand, from December to May, what after the, the law was, was passed and people getting up and running, the fiscal year is October. And so essentially, we saw when we looked at the revenue, the twenty eight thousand, it was really only from maybe mid-June until the first part of October. So it was a section of a, of a fiscal year and it had to do with when it was approved and then when the revenue, you know, was, was generated from that. But I, but I do think that's valid and, and of course, now at this point, Kelly, we know that we're well over a year at this point. Um, because the, the group even met, you know, it was well over a year ago when we met and talked about it. So I think that that'll be, you know, something that we can, we can find out.
So.
The clarification I, I wanted from um, the mayor and the council members. So are you asking for some follow up information in regards to the impact implications for the local communities, especially smaller communities? As well as the revenues generated, um, the new information? And did you want that gathered from the, the marijuana committee or did you want staff to do it or what approach did you have in mind?
So again, I'm just discussing it because these are some of the things that were discussed um, during this, this conference. And so I think that I, I'm, I am, I can't answer that. I think that's something we have to um, talk about right now. But I think that that is something that we should be doing our due diligence to be not what data was back when, whatever it started. But data now of this city made this amount of money, um, or, you know, what they did and it's solid data. So when you make your decision, rather yea or nay, you have now, you have the data right now of what it was like for policing, what it was like for maybe even property values, what it was like for their income. And then you have something, just to me, you have something much more solid to stand upon if you decide to award licenses.
Okay, so for Sterling Heights, right? So they started receiving applications roughly around twenty seventeen. Um, they received roughly eighty four applicants, right? And I don't have the number of how many applicants they selected, but there was an application fee of five thousand dollars. Um, in some of those ordinances, whoever the applicant or whoever the city selected as an applicant, um, the municipality basically um, would receive ten percent excise tax from the state of Michigan. Uh, there was also a ten thousand dollar application fee. Uh, and that was split between medical and that was split between recreational. So a total of ten thousand per applicant, depending on what they were opening. So in the case of Madison Heights, I'm sorry, in the case of Sterling Heights, um, we would have to count how many marijuana facilities they actually had. I don't have the number of what was opened. So now you're starting from twenty seventeen to present. So we would have to get information from each of those cities if we're talking, if we're trying to get information on the twenty twenty one revenue for, from cannabis and work our way backwards.
Ian, I have a, I have a question. You said eighty four um, applications and it was five thousand dollars an application?
Yeah, depending on what they were opening up. So five thousand per uh, business. So one for medical, that's five K, the other for recreational.
And that was the application?
Yes, those were the application fees.
So, so that would, I mean, eighty four times five thousand?
Right, so once that applicant was accepted, part of that would be the municipality excise tax of ten percent. Once they started doing business. So the, the state was taking that out.
So is there a place, so application fee is gonna be based, it's gonna be city by city, depending on the applications they got?
Exactly.
But the, the state, um, the city's share of the state revenue, is there a place where that is, where we can find that information, that data?
State revenue, yeah, it's usually on the, the.
M R A, I'll put it in the chat because that's something that um, um, they just updated that.
Yeah. It should be on the state website.
I think that information, so Ian, I'm, I'm not sure how um, they started accepting applications in two thousand seventeen, like Kelly had indicated. The ballot initiative didn't pass until November of eighteen. And then it took the state until January of twenty twenty before they even began accepting applications um, for recreational facilities. So, and remember, um, medical marijuana facilities don't pay any, uh, the city does not derive any revenue from the medical facilities. The application fee, and I can tell you already, just getting into this process, um, is, is a very lengthy, the application review and evaluation process is very time intensive and it's, it is going to consume a lot of resources. Uh, that application fee will likely um, just barely cover the, the fees that are, that are the time and the services that are gonna be required to process these applications. So the, you know, the only revenue will be whatever, whatever pro rata share the city would get based on the number of facilities in their county and how many facilities are in their city uh, that, that do receive that, that share from the state.
And that's, that's, that's why I was, I was talking a second ago and I was on mute. I didn't realize it. But that's, that's why I'm not, I'm not really sure I understand the, the question because the, the revenue is determined, the revenue that we would get is determined by the state. So regardless of, you know, the fact that if we have, if we have two more years of data, that's still not gonna tell us how much revenue that we're, we're gonna get.
Not asking you about how much we're gonna get. I'm asking you just on average, since we, we kind of did more pro for cities. Where I'm hurt, I'm hearing from the other mayors, the, the cons of it. And so now I'm trying to find out, I just, I'm curious and I'm thinking that we all should be curious because this is what you all, some of you all stood on is about the revenue and the business that they brought in. And so my question is, before you make that decision, I think you should talk to particular cities that you um, highlighted to see what kind of revenue was brought in, what kind of businesses were brought in, what kind of, you know, like with police, policing, did it increase, did it decrease? I'm just saying to me, when you're making a decision like this, that is changing your neighborhood, it's gonna change your neighborhood, that we should do our due diligence to see how those cities that we quoted as doing, you know, doing well or what's gonna do well, how it really has worked out for them.
Okay, so I should try to answer each of those questions one at a time. Number one, crime did not change in any of the cities. That was in our, that was one second, one second, one second, one second. I gave you your opportunity. Crime did not increase in any of these cities, period. We talked to every single police chief and I'm, I, I'm gonna say it again, I'm not pro or con. We followed the data and Dawn and Saleem can confirm that. Crime did not increase. That was the biggest concern all of us had. If crime would have increased, we would have just terminated the research, okay? What we're not talking about is the X factor from these businesses, which is um, basically you're having a springboard effect that can't really be calculated. Meaning when you have um, when you have these businesses in these cities, there are also other businesses that are actually popping up. So how do you quantify that as far as revenue? You can't quantify it because it's not the same business, okay? The other part of that is, and, and this is a big concern, everyone's saying property values have gone down, will go on, that will go down. And the fact, clear facts, property value went up in every single one of those cities the second those businesses showed up. That is data that we looked at, we looked at in, in great detail and we presented that to council. Now you're asking us to now go to these cities and find out how much money they made. Okay, so where do we start? Springboard businesses from marijuana? Do we start with the actual marijuana business? I'm just trying to figure out why these questions are coming right now.
Because.
No, we know how much money they made and they made twenty eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
The cities made twenty eight.
Yeah, the city made, cities made.
And that's, that's a done, that's a question is done. I mean, we know the answer.
And, and I have to, I, I beg to differ. The neighborhood is not going to change. We went to all of these cities, their neighborhood did not change. Okay, I need to stress that. Their neighborhood has not changed, period. Anybody could drive down Nine Mile and see for themselves if the neighborhood has changed. It hasn't.
I mean, when I say change, I'm saying good or bad. I'm just, so you, you've taken it out of context. I'm saying all I'm asking is to make sure that our due diligence is done um, now. I mean, I mean, it were continued. And so that's all I'm saying because it's just where I've listened to the residents and that's the reason why I'm here. And um, I think that it was clear when we had our last meeting, it was fifty fifty. So that means there's a lot of people that could be for it or a lot of people that's against it. But from what I saw is fifty fifty and I personally wanna make the best decision for the people that put me in the seat and not from what I think might be the best thing for uh, for Lathrop, but you know, everybody.
Okay, so, so as far as the scale goes, when it comes to uh, did the neighborhoods change, good or bad? On the bad side, it didn't change. On the good side, they had more retail shops based on the springboard effect. They had more just by those businesses uh, setting up shop.
So I think um, Ian's right, but so I think what Kelly is. Ian's right, but so I think what Kelly is asking though, Ian and and Dawn who are on the team is an update to our analysis, really. Because the analysis was done when it was done. And we, like you said, Ian, we went by the data and came to our conclusions. But now it's been more months, right, since it's passed and more time for those businesses to exist. And Kelly's asking for an update to our to that analysis, right, Kelly? Which I don't necessarily disagree with, is I, you know, it's a reasonable request, you know, more time has gone on. You know, is it still true what we found back then?
That's all I was asking, basically. And I'm sorry that I'm not as, you know, as eloquent. As you are to say, yeah, let's update it. But that's, but yes, Saleem, you just hit it off the head, yes.
Has just shared a document where she's actually shown higher revenue coming back into the cities than what we initially talked about with the twenty-eight thousand. So and that was for March of twenty twenty-one, that she would.
Suzie, if you could send it to my email, that'd be great, but I can't open it.
Oh, yeah, sure. And I will, I will say that, so Jill put that, Jill put those pages together for the open house. And in our conversations about it. The, she said it was very difficult actually to quantify. Those figures because they're not reported the same for each community. And so, you know, like, I think it was Hazel Park, she said, was, you know, they don't break it out. As like this is revenue from. Sorry, there's no message to her, Kelly. There's just. She said, you know, it doesn't really, they didn't break out like the permit fees, you know, like some, so some communities broke it out that way. Some didn't, and so it was, it was, it's more of an apples. Oranges kind of kind of conversation, but I, it's a baseline, right, is is really just what that is for you.
I appreciate it. So I mean, it's just, you know, I'm taking these emails and the the messages very seriously. I mean, extremely seriously. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we all. I I for fact will be doing my own due diligence, but also just to make sure that we're all doing our due diligence. I I have, I mean, I'm telling you, me going to this conference really opened my eyes with a lot of people saying, oh, all the cities want it. Or, you know, it's doing so well. When I sign and I talk to other, you know, talk to mayors that didn't agree with what we're talking about.
Can you give us specifics? Because, you know, you can't even quantify when a a test lab is set up in a city. Because all of those people that work for test labs actually purchase houses in the city where they're set up. So how do you quantify that?
So I I I can't, I I mean, I don't know. I'm at, this again, is just a discussion. I can't. And this was brought up while I was out of town, and that's why I'm bringing it on to you all as a council, just to kind of, you know, talk this through. Of what, you know.
So I want to, I want to go back to what Kelly said too, as far as like this timeline. So I was, and please forgive me because I'm new, but I was under the impression that at this city council. We would be having the discussion of the application process and scoring matrix. I thought that's what we were told would happen. And then in the September one, we would actually be considering the resolution. So then we could, we could accept the applications after that. So I I'm not sure, because it appears to me that this timeline has been adjusted.
Yeah, that was, that was my understanding too.
Yeah, that was my understanding also. I'm, yeah, I mean.
I guess, I guess the question is, 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 you know, I guess this is a question for Cheryl and Scott. I mean, so we've got a month delay. So what what is it just working on the 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 scoring matrix is taking longer than expected? What is, what is the delay? Or why was it delayed, I should say?
It's just the amount of, it's the amount of time taken to do it. I mean, we we've probably already put in about five hours meeting collectively. And that's just trying to group criteria. So it's, we still have a ways to go. So it's, it is a very time, like I said, it's very time intensive in making sure that. We we are able to. Equally evaluate all of these applicants applicants and and not put a certain applicant had a disadvantage. Which, so we're trying to mitigate liability for the city. And also come up with a fair system that still some way creates a. Clear-cut winner, so to speak. So being able, being able to assess the points in an equitable manner. And still have some point differentiation to be able to elevate the the best candidates to city council. So that that's taken longer than we were initially anticipating. So that's, that's the primary reason for the delay.
Though we don't, so we don't have visibility to what you guys have been discussing. So can you give us an example of an applicant not being fairly assessed? Because we, right now, I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, so a prime example would be, all right. If, and this is just a purely hypothetical, let's say we have a a scoring criteria where we give someone. Ten points if they invest a certain dollar amount into their property location. That's putting individuals that may have an existing property that already has been rehabilitated. And and therefore aren't going to be putting that dollar amount into their building, it's putting them at a disadvantage. And so you're singling out specific parcels. That are, it it doesn't matter who applies for that, if that's where their their facility is going to be located, they're at a disadvantage. Because because of that scoring criteria, they can't reinvest in the building. It's already been done. So that's just one example. And that and that's an issue, you know, that has gone through litigation. Traverse City is one of the cities that's dealt with that, where existing, existing businesses were penalized, basically, because they were already in existence. So it's just one, one of the issues we have to work through.
That there were, you know, several attorneys on the phone who were talking about that, that kind of thing. So I guess the 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 real gist, Scott, is that it's just making it legally defensible is is taking more time than correct.
Exactly. And again, it's just trying to do what's best for the city and and at the same time, trying to avoid. The number of lawsuits that I expect we'll see.
And that's one thing that we did talk about, talk about also in a Susan Marie with a Kalamazoo attorney. That is, it's nine times out of ten, incorrect if I'm wrong, but this is what he was saying, you're going to get sued anyway. Because even if you pick somebody who, you know, based off the example that you just said, that person's going to sue. Or you give extra points because someone is already in the city based off of someone who's not, that person is going to feel like you unfairly judged them and they're going to sue you also.
And Kelly, I I think exactly what Scott is saying and Bruce and and then what you just said. I mean, I I could, I can sue Ian for divorce right now. We've never been married. So people, people can make choices to sue over whatever. So I like the fact that Scott is really kind of looking at this from from all those angles. My my question would be, again. The the timeline dragging to September, October, and then through December. You know, Ian has a lot of time in invested in this as as this lean and and those kinds of things and really looking at it. Is there a possibility of moving toward the discussion of the application and scoring matrix at the same meeting that we consider the resolution? Thereby convincing the timeline?
And I think, I think that makes sense. If if the application is complete, if the scoring matrix is complete for council consideration. I don't think there's any reason why council cannot consider when they're going to do that, you know, the ribbon cutting, so to speak, and and beginning to accept the applications. What, once that data is set, it is a thirty-day window to receive applications and then begin the scoring and evaluation under the ordinance. So it will move quickly once, once that date opens. And I and I fully anticipate that, you know, the city will will get a significant number. I don't think Jill's on tonight, but in one of our meetings, and Suzie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think she had said Pontiac had received. A couple hundred applications and during their open window.
Yeah, or something like that. I hope we don't get a couple hundred. Just gonna say that right now.
So I have, I have two other things to kind of ask about out of this. So I think Kelly's point is really valid in the in the point that. You know, the city and and the residents are looking for a resolution or not, I don't want to use the word resolution. They're looking for this to to draw to a closure. And so either we vote on a resolution and we vote favorably or we vote negatively. I think that is is really important. The other thing I had to ask about Scott is earlier, you talked about the fact that. You know, the the time it's going to take to review these license and applications and to be able to do that. Are you all looking at the fee that we're going to be asking to make sure? That we are able to cover the additional time that it's going to take to review these? And I know five thousand dollars was tossed out, but as you're saying, it takes a long time to actually review the applications. Is that something we should consider in the application process and and maybe looking at a higher fee? I don't want this to be a burden.
Wasn't five thousand the maximum?
Yep, that's the most that we can charge is is five thousand. And like I said, it's, it's, you know, a lot of it's going to depend, I mean, it's, you guys know. We've got staff is is wearing six different hats already as it is. There's an election coming up. There's, there's a lot going on in the city right now. It it's, it's hard to pull individuals away from what they're already doing. To to evaluate all of these. So so it is, it is a time-consuming process and I do anticipate that the city. May have to rely on their consultants a little bit in that process of of evaluating and scoring.
What is that, what's the five thousand max based on? Because I didn't realize, I didn't remember that there was a maximum. On application fees. Because I thought some, some of the cities told us they were charging ten thousand per application.
I think that was for when they were doing medical.
That was for. Co-located, right? Five thousand per application for a per business, should I say?
Is that a state mandate or a state? Limitation?
That's part of the the rules from the state, Merkmo or whatever.
To the application fee, is that just for the application fee? Or, and I guess my question is, would things like the inspection fees from the building officials? Would that be in addition to, or is that all inclusive of all possible fees that we would have?
And the app, that five thousand dollar application fee is just for the cannabis application fee. They still have to, they will still have to pay the fees for site plan review, specialty induced. I fully anticipate that they will also require full engineering review. As well as full building plan review. And that's just prior, that's prior to getting any building permits. So. Those are all separate processes. So they all have their separate fees.
So would it be helpful to move this conversation along to plan for the study session in September, which I believe is September? Thirteenth. That we have the, at least the initial draft and hopefully final draft for the scoring matrix and application process. And you're, I hear you're asking for additional updated information in regards to impacts in other local communities. That can be gathered.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And also the the consideration of the resolution in September.
Yep.
For a draft resolution, okay.
Scott, quick question on the application process as far as reviewing and everything. So I take it you have a team that's going to do that, or our city will have a team to do that? I'm just trying to figure out what that looks like.
So are we, that's part, that's part of what we're trying to figure out right now.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding that? And I'm sorry, Cheryl. You can continue on with your report.
Yeah, just one more question to Scott Baker. So we've benchmarked Madison Heights and Hazel Park, to name two, right? But we've incorporated several cities, the best of the best in in the ordinance. I guess that wouldn't be a stretch to also contact them to find out how they. Incorporated their application process after they started accepting.
I mean, we we have that information, but the thing is, is our ordinance is not Madison Heights, it's not Hazel Park. I mean, it's, we created an ordinance that was specific to Lathir Village and and the challenges that Lathir Village has. I mean, Hazel Park has a. An industrial, essentially an industrial corridor, they have a commercial corridor. We we don't have that. We have, these facilities are ten feet off in some cases, somebody's backyard. So so our ordinance was a little bit more challenging, I would say, than some of those other communities. And again, we're trying to fit this to our community, not not, you know, one of those other communities. Because, yeah, we we easily could just cut and paste theirs and and throw it out there. But I don't think the residents or the council would be happy with with what would result with that type of a approach.
Fundamental application process is typically the same, correct? I'm not saying to cut and paste, I'm saying just to look to see what exactly what it looks like.
I don't think there's any sort of standard, Ian. I mean, this is all so new. I mean, you know, I know Pontiac does, for their application review, they split their application up. And it goes to different, different departments for their own check. And that may not be, I mean, they're significantly larger than us and have a larger staff. I don't know if that's necessarily the same way, applicable to how we could do it, right? Like, I don't, I just don't, I don't think there's a standard process.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the report in regards to recreation. I did want to remind everyone that Chris is going to be leaving us at the end of the month. And this is of his choice. He wants to pursue a different career. He's a historian by, well, he will be when he gets his advanced degree. And in celebration, he's asked for a park cleanup on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth. At Golden Gate Park. So everyone's invited to participate in that and to wish him well. And he said, bring your own gloves and vegan treats are welcome. The summer concert with Charles and Quinn Scales from last week, it was rained out, is being rescheduled to this Wednesday. Hopefully, fingers crossed, the weather will cooperate as a backup. We are planning to have it moved to the community room if possible. And if we have power on that date. And it should also be the first date for our live streaming of a concert. So we're hoping to make that happen. Also in regards to Chris's responsibilities, we're looking at reorganizing staff to assume some of those responsibilities. As well as I'm engaging in a conversation with the city of Southfield to see if they can start offering some of the programming. So we don't necessarily have to do everything in-house. The sidewalk project, and I'll be bringing that more specifics to you at your next council meeting. The sidewalk project is underway. As you recall, that project for this year one is the business corridor of Southfield Road. And then the residential south of I six ninety-six on both the east and the west side of Southfield Road. They're going to start with the horizontal saw cutting and then move to the actual repair and replacement. Special assessments will be, notices are being sent out. We have the final cost. We are setting up a BSNA system online so that we are able to track those payments. As well as the residents are able to track them and to make those payments online if they choose. There are also payment plans available. If you recall, that council authorized that they can have two years to repay for sidewalk assessments. And there is the fifty-dollar administrative fee and those payments are due the first of December each year. Both B D A and Planning Commission meetings for this month have been canceled. And I'm very thrilled to share with you that the redevelopment-ready community certification has been recertified. For the city of Lathir Village through November of twenty twenty-three. And that also allows it to coincide with the five-year master plan. We're getting close to the deadline. So. So anything else I can talk about in the regular council meeting? I did want to mention briefly in regards to the tree management program. And I believe Rami's on the call. So we're starting to set up a system in which we can have the DPS do some of the minor pruning on the trees, basically up to ten or twelve feet. That they can reach more easily and then bring in the. And then bring in the contractors to do the more extensive um pruning as well as the tree removal and whatever is needed in regards to these, these trees removal of dangerous branches. What we have discovered, we've been working with um JD Hart for several years. But um with all the recent storms, they have not necessarily been available. And in some cases, they're saying they can't get to us until past September. We wanted to bring some other contractors on so that at least, especially in regards to emergency situations, we have options to address some of the situations that are arising. Also, we have to have some conversations with Tringali because they can only handle so much capacities to make certain that when the um, the DPS guys in particular are going through neighborhoods, that they are able to accommodate that extra load and also working with um a GIS system so that we can um have, one, an inventory of the trees as well as um updates in regards to the condition of the trees and the status of how they've been remediated. So that's going to be on your agenda, your regular agenda for your consideration to get that program started.
Anything else?
Those are the big ones that I can say in three minutes.
Okay, let me see. And I, I just wanted to say, I don't know if it's really appropriate at city council, but, but if it is, just to make sure that there's record to thank Cheryl. And, you know, I have the lemonade idea was amazing. Uh, just to, I mean, because God, people had such a rough week with no electricity and, and everything. And so I just, I don't know. That was, that was extra and that was awesome.
Oh, thank you. And that was a rain or shine idea. So if we did, we didn't know we were going to have power, we were going to be in the park. And it's like, whatever payments or whatever we can do in the park, we'll do and we'll just keep it moving as best we can. But it's a great community and we wanted to say thank you and also just celebrate those minor successes, which are huge some days. Um, just to be able to open the doors. And we have a fantastic staff and with a very good attitude who also chip in and just making everything happen as best we can, given our limited circumstances some days.
And then, um, thank you um for the tree program or for, there's only one company that was. So I thought you're still looking for more.
We're still looking for more. So I would probably ask you to modify the motion to allow for um emergency contracts with any identified um embedded um vendor. There's some more out there.
Okay. And I think that was it for this study session.
Public comment.
Public comment.
I worry about mayor and council comments.
Hello, I got it. I was saying that's for the agenda part of it, just to, I mean, the discussion item, sorry. Got it. You all are like really on me today. I'm sorry I upset you all about asking about marijuana. But anyway, mayor and council comments.
Uh, I've got, I've got several, but I'm definitely not gonna have time to do it all in four minutes. So I'm just gonna bring up the, the, one of them and I'll bring up the others in the other meeting. But um, I, I'm just curious, you know, I, it, it just seems to me that, that everybody in the city has a Jim Wright story. Um, and it's not, it's rarely a pleasant one. Um, I was talking to one of our new businesses, um, and uh you know, he, he's, and I, I believe the administration has, has, has talked to him, you know, the, the Holistic MRI Center. And, you know, he's, he, he stopped me on Saturday or Sunday, I can't remember which day it was and was, was basically just, yeah, as he said, just venting. Um, and, you know, I've had issues. I mean, he's a nice guy. He's, 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 he's definitely got the skills that we need, but the, it just seems like there, there's, there's just a lot of oil and water that goes on between him and the residents. So I, I guess my, my question is this, have we done anything about, or attempted to do anything about this in the past to get the, the working relationship uh better? Because I mean, we, we need, you know, we, we had a, we had a, a really bad reputation among businesses um with our planning commission. We took care of that. Our planning commission is doing great now. Um, but we're still, or I'm still hearing, I don't know about the other council people, is, is still, you know, problems with the building department. So I guess I, I, I have maybe three questions. One, have we done anything to try to work with Jim to be more accepting and more um open arms to our, our residents while still applying codes? Two, um, does, you know, he, he's a contractor and McKenna is our, our, our vendor. Is there a, a different building inspector that they could do if we need to go that route? Um, I guess, I guess, I guess I don't have a three. I gotta, I guess if I have a one and a two. So um, you know, like I said, I like Jim, but you know, I, I just hear constant negative stories about the, the interaction. His work is good, but the interaction with the residents just doesn't seem to be um as, as open and pleasant as I think we would want as, as a council. So I just want to throw that out there.
I wanted to offer one quick response. One of the things that we're doing, um, Suzie has been holding, I'll call it a building meeting every Monday. So we meet with him and as well as Rami and the staff here to go over anything that's related to any of the projects. So we're all on the same page. We all have the same, same information and there aren't variances in the interpretation of what's expected of the businesses. So I think that helps tremendously. And I guess the rest we can talk about later.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I just, I, I think it's something that, that you guys should, should look into, at least some, some way of just making the demeanor a little bit more pleasant. Um, I mean, I've experienced it myself when I did my, my renovation five years ago. Um, and I, I've, I, I just get uh people constantly coming up to me making, you know, little jokes or or in this case, stopping me, you know, for a half an hour to vent and so forth. So I, I think we should at least look, look into that.
Yeah, just two observations. So um in the last six years, I don't think we've ever attempted to correct the behavior. I mean, it has always been status quo up until you joined council, Bruce, where we had some, we started talking about some options, right? So we know what that overall cost is on that contract and we thought we could offset it by finding someone equally as reputable at a, you know, at a decent price. And that kind of fell by the wayside. That would be our option three that you're talking about.
I was, or like I said, just, you know, the, the, they're, they're a consulting company. I mean, we're satisfied with the work that they're doing, at least as far as I know.
Or switch.
Just switch with another vendor and see if that, or another uh uh building inspector.
Yeah.
That work, works better for us.
I mean, we could do that. I mean.
It's seven o'clock. We can continue this conversation during um our meeting. And then for the public, I apologize that you were not able to get um opportunity to um make a comment. And if you would just join us for the seven o'clock meeting, um, you will go before council and um mayor coun- comments. Thank you. Well, this is adjourned. See you all on the next call.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.